Para do, para do.
Ah, o, o.
Oh, just a picture.
Di castigo, di castigo. Para, para. Oh, para que se matubot na war. Okay na ba kayo? Dalawa, dalawa na makaupo.
Manati? Sa taas meron na kuya?
Meron, 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 meron. Sa hapon, ganito lang naman dito eh. Ang papabago lang natin 'yung pa kalindara. Pero alam na rin Arson palagi ang maka advance na mag-earson 'yun. Nagyari sa road 'yung papasa-baboy.
Konti lang 'yung araw ngayon eh.
The duty bond. Do't pa rin man. Oh, nga, wala pa tayo, wala. Papanan to kayo, at. Sa hapon, kabilang sa road, ay, dun, di ay. Ay, sa hapon, di ko diya diya. Sumaagap, pita, po, si Magju. Di, 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 wala man talaga. Sa siya, si Magju, sa, sa, di, di, pa, pa, pa. Siya, ay.
Session is resumed. Let us have a minute of silent prayer. The chair is, directs the secretary general to perform the reference of business. For the secretary general, read the title of bills and resolutions on first reading, as well as communications and committee reports for referral by the chair to the appropriate committee.
Additional reference of business, bills on first reading. House bill number nine-nine-seven-nine, establishing the Bulacan Sports Training Center in Malolos, Bulacan. By Representative C. Alvarado.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House bill number nine-nine-eight-seven, to promote investments in agriculture by easing farmland landholding restrictions, rationalizing land transaction processes, creating for the purposes the Office of Cooperative-Led Agricultural Development. By Representative Salceda.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House bill number one-zero-zero-zero-two, establishing two additional schools division offices in Bohol. By Representative Omentado.
Basic Education and Culture.
House bill number one-zero-zero-zero-five, establishing a system for the donation and recycling of electronic gadgets. By Representative Castelo.
Ecology.
House bill number one-zero-zero-six, extending the corporate life off and strengthening the power sector assets and liabilities management corporation. By Representative Makapagal Arroyo.
Energy.
House bill number one-zero-zero-one-zero, creating the Environmental Protection and Enforcement Bureau under the DNR. By Representative Vargas.
Government Reorganization and the Committee on Natural Resources.
House bill number one-zero-zero-one-one, providing for a national housing development, production, and financing program, regulate, regularizing its appropriation for its implementation. By Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House bill number one-zero-zero-one-two, establishing the Mount Masaraga protection, protected landscape in Albay as a protected area under the category of protected landscape. By Representative Cabredo.
Natural Resources.
House bill numbers one-zero-zero-one-six to one-zero-zero-two-zero, providing for the establishment of Kadiwa Ni'ani at Hita Stores in certain barangays in Quezon City. By Representative Vargas.
Agriculture and Food.
House bill number one-zero-zero-two-three, mandating government financial institutions to create a bank account for every unbanked Filipino. By Representative Tambunting.
Banks and financial intermediaries.
House bill number one-zero-zero-two-four, granting distinctive honors and privileges to national athletes, creating a national endowment fund for sports heroes. By Representative Tambunting.
Youth and Sports Development.
House bill number one-zero-zero-two-five, establishing the Urban Green Patches Program. By Representative Tambunting.
The Special Committee on Reforestation.
Communications, letters and emails from certain city mayors, municipal mayors, and provincial governors, informing the house on their reports on fund utilization and status of programs, projects, activities, implementation relative to bayanehan grant to cities, municipalities, and provinces, and local government support, fan assistance to municipalities for certain months of twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated March thirty, twenty-twenty-one of the Tarlac State University President submitting to the house a copy of Tarlac State University Annual Report, twenty-twenty.
Higher and Technical Education.
Letter dated May twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one of the COA Chairperson, furnishing the house with copies of the twenty-twenty annual audit reports on certain national government agencies.
Appropriations.
Letter dated June two, twenty-twenty-one of the COA Team R three-zero-seven Audit Team Leader, Pamanga State Agricultural University, furnishing the house with a copy of their annual audit report on the Pamanga State Agricultural University for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty.
Appropriations.
Letter dated June seven, twenty-twenty-one of the COA Regional Office Number One, Regional Director, furnishing the house with copies of the annual audit reports on certain state universities and colleges of Region One for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty.
Appropriations.
Letters dated June eight, twenty-twenty-one of the COA Regional Office Number four-dash-A, Officer in Charge, furnishing the house with copies of their annual audit reports on the Philippine High School for the Arts and Laguna State Polytechnic University for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty.
Appropriations.
Email dated July seven, twenty-twenty-one of the National Electrification Administration, FSD, submitting to the house a copy of their report on fund utilization of subsidy funds as of June thirty, twenty-twenty-one, approved by the Corporate Resources and Financial Services Deputy Administrator.
Appropriations.
Annual Audit Report on the Central Luzon State University for the period ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty.
Appropriations.
Letters dated August three, twenty-twenty-one of the Office of the President, Executive Secretary, Malacanyang, transmitting two original copies of each of Republic Act numbers one-one-five-seven-three to one-one-five-seven-eight, which were signed by President Duterte.
To the Archives.
Committee Reports, Report Numbers one-one-four-six and one-one-four-seven of the Committee on Natural Resources on House Bill Numbers one-zero-zero-three and one-zero-zero-zero-four. Report Number one-one-four-eight of the Committees on Justice and Appropriations on House Bill Number one-zero-zero-zero-seven. Report Numbers one-one-four-nine and one-one-five-zero of the Committees on Tourism and Appropriations on House Bill Numbers one-zero-zero-eight and one-zero-zero-zero-nine. Report Numbers one-one-five-one and one-one-five-two of the Committees on Health and Appropriations on House Bill Number one-zero-zero-one-three and one-zero-zero-one-four. Report Number one-one-five-three of the Committees on Youth and Sports Development, Appropriations and Ways and Means on House Bill Number one-zero-zero-one-five. Report Numbers one-one-five-four and one-one-five-five of the Committee on Local Government on House Bill Number, Numbers one-zero-zero-two-one and one-zero-zero-two-two.
The aforementioned committee reports are all referred to the Committee on Rules. Session is suspended for a few minutes.
Papas post ko rin sabi niya. Kung kaya yun sa arke, na pa iker lang sabay. Sa ano manahaw ah? Omera tara sa diyan si Ibiya noh? This is pop idyo, yun na maya. Post ko na ko ulo. Tapos dating wala, dating for dating. Pa ako ulo. Inisip dapat pinutol narin na reyong ano. Do do tong naririn sa dulo, dating for dating tapos alisin yung dosi. Diba? Tapos lalagay nila calendar of this is August twenty four. Dapat dyan ta sa ano. Papas post ko na ako ng digital calendar. Hindi ko kasi pinos ang calendar ngayon eh, diba? Kari kari yung araw noh? Kung additional CD talaga. So ano mo kasi additional calendar lang to? Kasi nag calendar na ka pahapon eh, post po lang tayo. Meron ba talaga ano pagka additional CD talaga? Oo ah, kasi. Hindi na diyan post eh, kasi post niya talaga. Ah, pero na pa po rin yun sa dating. Mausi mausi. So okay na pa ako additional CD na lang. Yun, yun lang manjok debo talaga. Oo nga, yung haloh ko. Malilit talaga ko. Oo. Yung parin. Papas, yun pa tayo. Uhu, yun ano. Yung dating, dating, papas, papas, aming nagdagat dun sa tayo. Dali ang papa. Post ko nga rin ako na hanap. Hanapin mo yung dati mo post ko sa mga papasak. Papasak, papas, aming nagdagat dun sa tayo. Next time, ah, ayun. Ah, yung swa, diba meron akong term noh? Kung may term dali ko, dali ko. Maako na po sa additional CD. Kung macontact siya, dali mo yun. Kung may edition, may edition. Dali mo yun, ay, maako na lang yun. Yung dating side, medley ka substitution, yun sa tao. Yung respecto niya. Wala ano? Sino na post ako? Amelid ba substitute, pero may ganoon na lang yun ano, post ko. Yung the progression of the. Apost, alam mo na ba kung ano yun sasabihin? Naano si Robin? Ganun. Ano, yung amelid ba substitute, yun yung medical partner. Sa western. Hindi pala bago title yun. Kasi paano ko maano yun? Wala naman post ko. Kasi paano ko magsubmit? Ay na lang ako, ay, yun na lang ako. Ay na lang ako, kasi mo na seto, patalo na ako. Patalo na ako. Yung medley. Pero yung kanya ko na. Ay na lang. Madalang mo rin sa akin yung title yung sa medical, anong medical partner? Natiil lang natin sa kami, po post na rin yun, yun nandyan dun sa, sa amelid. Apost, madalaw ka adit sa'yo para makita mo adit yung title sa'yo. Subingo kaya ano? Yung yung sa substitute. Nandiyan na sila ano, saka bigay lang yung si Robin. Kasi sa, malagay nila yun. Yung yung. Ganun oo. Yung yung ito, ito, number five yun. Number five, yun. Yun lang naman ang teke kap eh. Apost yung isa naman. Yung sa natin yung year, para ka lang yun tuloy-tuloy, yung hiding yun. Oo, yun pwede natin seto. Hindi na lang ako, tapos magseto tayo, tuyo na tayo. Itinasa yun na, pero hindi pa paano, hindi muna muna ko yun. Hindi muna rin na gano'n para medley ba substitute. Pero hindi pa ano yun ah? Na, hindi ko pa sa waste. Pero yun, yun ay traffic, traffic, yun ay ano yun. Ako na po post yun. Dati yun na rin naman additional CD ba?
Walang ano.
Ang good, ang good, ang good, ang good. Ano, yung ano rin yung video ko na ano, ako hindi ako post namin yung additional CD. Yung yun sa akin na, ako, nine nine eight, yun sa tayo. Sa palang yun, sa kami na. Pero, nilagay mo lang naman ng date, diba? Yung lang sa tao. Additional yun. Thank you, thank you, J R. Ano nung video na, ganun yun sa lang? Wala po. Ay sir. Just all those yun, just stop. Just all. Ano pwede na, tawag yun, additional CD. Apost ko na. Then they'll say, "Oh, okay." 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 Then they'll say, "Oh, okay."
Section Resumé. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I request that the Secretary General, Madam Speaker, be directed to read the title of the House Bill Number 9557 and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting, Isobo, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and hereby call the roll for nominal voting. House Bill Number 9557, an act providing for an efficient procedure for declaring a nuisance candidate and imposing stiffer penalties on the nuisance candidate and other person who has caused the filing of a nuisance candidate's certificate of candidacy amending for the purpose Section 69 of Batas Pambansa Bilang 881, as amended, also known as the Omnibus Election Code of the Philippines. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill Number 9557 on third reading: Abante Abaya, Belenosha, Abu, Abegsaldivar, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advincula, Agabas, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Henaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amantimatva, Amatong, Angara, Aragonés, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Omentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Bersaga, Bascub, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Kabredo, Kagas, Calderón, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Cayetano Alan Peter, Cayetano María La Arni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chungalau, Co Angelica, Co Elizalde, Cohuango, Culiantes, Crisologo, Kuah, Quaresma, Cueva, Culiamat, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Daza, De Jesús, De Venezha, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, De Los Santos, De Lozo Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Khalid, Duavit, Duali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian, Evcas, Ecleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Parinyas Ria, Parinyas Rudy Cesar, Fernández, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuente Bella, Gaite, Garbin, García José Enrique, García Pablo Gian, García Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Gato, Geron, Goed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, González Aurelio, González Neptali, González Sandro, Goriseta, Guico, Gulyas, Guya, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernández, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halos Jos, Javier, Jimenez, Co Elisa, Co Wilton, Conghun, Labadlabad, Lacson, Lacson Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lazatin, Liatson, Legarda, Lim, Limkaychong, López, Loyola, Lusotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangudadatu, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernández, Marino, Marquez, Martínez, Matva, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natibidad Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Juan, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Uminal, Olivares, Ong José, Ong Roni, Ordanes, Ortega, Uano Dizon, Pacia Alberto, Pacia Rogelio, Padernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Penya, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Imbo, Radaza, Ramires Sato, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Ieda, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sacdalan, Tagarbaria, Sacaluran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento, Saulug, Sabelliano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihan, Sinsooat, Suansing Estrelita, Suansing Horacio, Suárez Aleta, Suárez David, Suntay, Ti Alvarado, Taduran, Taliado, Tambunting, Tan Aliza, Tan Angelina, Tan Samir, Tan Shari, Tan Sharni, Tehada, Teves Arnolfo, Teves José, Tiyango, Tolentino, Torres Gómez, Tulfo, Tupaz, Totor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali María Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Bergara, Villia, Villia Fuerte, Villia Nueva Eduardo, Villia Nueva Noel, Villar, Villiaraza Suárez, Villiarica, Violago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Wykurat, Zarate Zubiri. Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9557. Abante, Abaya, Abelenosa, Abegsaldivar, Abunda, Acosta Alba, Agabas, Agarau, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Aragonés, Arenas, Omentado, Bagatsing, Banyas Nograles, Baronda, Bersaga, Bautista Bandigan, Biazon, Bilyones, Biron, Bravo, Bulut, Kabatbat, Calixto, Cardema, Kari, Chungalauco, Angelica, Co Elizalde, Cohuango, Dalipe, Daza, De Jesús, Defensor Michael, Dimaporo Abdullah, Duavit, Erise, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Parinyas Rudy Cesar, Fernández, Fernando, Fortun, García José Enrique, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Goed, Gonzaga, González Neptali, González Sandro, Guico, Guya, Hataman, Hernández, Herrera Di, Jimenez, Conghun, Lagman, Lagon, Liatson, Mangudadatu, Marcoleta, Marino, Marquez, Matva, Mendoza, Mercado, Nograles Juan, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Ortega, Pacia Rogelio, Paduano, Pichai, Pineda, Rivera, Roman, Romero, Sacaluran, Salceda, Sanchez, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Sinsooat, Suárez Aleta, Suárez David, Suntay, Si Alvarado, Tan Angelina, Tan Samir, Tan Sharni, Tehada, Teves Arnolfo, Tiyango, Torres Gómez, Ti Alan, Umali Alfonso, Unavia, Ui Juliet, Vargas Alfonso, Veloso, Villia Nueva Eduardo, Villia Nueva Noel, Villiaraza Suárez, Villiarica, Yu, Enzubiri.
With one nine one in the affirmative, zero in the negative, zero in abstention, House Bill Number 9557 is now approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9562 and for this purpose, by request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 9562, an act providing for early voting by qualified senior citizens and persons with disabilities in national and local elections. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill Number 9562 on third reading: Abante, Abaya, Abelenosa, Abu, Abegsaldivar, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advincula, Agabas, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Henaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amantimatva, Amatong, Angara, Aragonés, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Omentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barbers, Barbers, Barondas, Bersaga, Bascub, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Kabredo, Kagas, Calderón, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Cayetano Alan Peter, Cayetano María La Arni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chungalauco, Angelica, Co Elizalde, Cohuango, Culiantes, Crisologo, Kuah, Quaresma, Cueva, Culiamat, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Daza, De Jesús, De Venezha, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, De Los Santos, De Lozo Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Khalid, Duavit, Duali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian, Evcas, Ecleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Parinyas Ria, Parinyas Rudy Cesar, Fernández, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuente Bella, Gaite, Garbin, García José Enrique, García Pablo Gian, García Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gatasaya, Gachalian, Gato, Geron, Goed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, González Aurelio, González Neptali, González Sandro, Goriseta, Guico, Gulyas, Guya, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernández, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halos Jos, Javier, Jimenez, Co Elisa, Co Wilton, Conghun, Labadlabad, Lacson, Lacson Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lazatin, Liatson, Legarda, Lim, Limkaychong, López, Loyola, Lusotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangudadatu, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernández, Marino, Marquez, Martínez, Matva, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natibidad Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Juan, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Uminal, Olivares, Ong José, Ong Roni, Ordanes, Ortega, Uano Dizon, Pacia Alberto, Pacia Rogelio, Padernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Penya, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Imbo, Radaza, Ramires Sato, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Ieda, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sacdalan, Tagarbaria, Sacaluran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento, Saulug, Sabelliano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihan, Sinsooat, Suansing Estrelita, Suansing Horacio, Suárez Aleta, Suárez David, Suntay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Taliado, Tambunting, Tan Aliza, Tan Angelina, Tan Samir, Tan Sharni, Tan Sharni, Tehada, Teves Arnolfo, Teves José, Tiyango, Tolentino, Torres Gómez, Tulfo, Tupaz, Totor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali María Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Bergara, Villia, Villia Fuerte, Villia Nueva Eduardo, Villia Nueva Noel, Villar, Villiaraza Suárez, Villiarica, Violago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora, No Ronaldo, Zamora Wykurat, Zarate Zubiri. Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill 9562. Abante, Abaya, Abelenosa, Abegsaldivar, Abunda, Acosta Alba, Agabas, Agarau, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Aragonés, Arenas, Omentado, Bagatsing, Banyas Nograles, Baronda, Bersaga, Bautista Bandigan, Biazon, Bilyones, Biron, Bravo, Bulut, Kabatbat, Cardema, Kari, Chungalauco, Angelica, Co Elizalde, Cohuango, Dalipe, Daza, De Jesús, Defensor Michael, Dimaporo Abdullah, Duavit, Erisa, Ermita Buahin Defensor Michael, Dimaporo Abdullah, Duabit, Erisa, Ermitabuhain, Paringes Rudy Cesar, Fernández, Fernando, Fortún, García José Enrique, Garin Charon, Gatasaya, Goed, Gonzaga, González Neptali, González Sandro, Guico, Guya, Hataman, Hernández, Herrera Di, Jiménez, Congun, Lagman, Lagon, Liachon, Mangungodato, Marcoleta, Marinho, Marquez, Matba, Mendoza, Mercado, Negrales Juan, Nolasco, Núñez Malaniaon, Ortega, Pakya Rogelio, Paduano, Pichay Pineda, Rivera, Roman, Romero, Sa Caluran, Salceda, Sanchez, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singsuat, Suárez Aleta, Suárez David, Suntay, Si Alvarado, Tan Angelina, Tan Samir, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves Arnolfo, Tiyango, Torres Gómez, Ti Alan, Unavia, Ui Juliet, Vargas Alfonso, Veloso, Villia Nueva Eduardo, Villia Nueva Noel, Villaraza Suarez, Villarica, Yu Zubiri.
With one nine six in the affirmative, zero on the negative, zero abstention, House Bill number nine five six two is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of House Bill number nine five seven five and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting, I so move, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill number nine five seven five, an establishing the Young Farmers and Fisher Folk Challenge Program, creating for the purpose the Young Farmers and Fisher Folk Challenge Council and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill number nine five seven five on third reading. Abante, Abaya, Abelenosa, Abu, Abegsaldivar, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Ad Jong, Ad Bincula, Agarau, Agabas, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Senaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Amatong, Angara, Aragonés, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Umentado, Babasa, Bagatining, Balindong, Banyas Negrales, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barsaga, Bascog, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Kalixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castillo, Castro Franz, Castro Predenil, Kayetano Alan Peter, Kayetano Mariela Arni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chungalawko, Angelika Ko, Elizaldi, Kawanko, Culiantes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Cueva, Culiamat, Tagooc, Dalipe, Dalog, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delos Santos, Deloso Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Khalid, Duabit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian, Evcas, Ecleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermitabuhain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Paringes Ria, Paringes Rudy Cesar, Fernández, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Flores, Fortún, Fortuno, Frasco, Puentebelia, Gaite, Garbin, García José Enrique, García Pablo John, García Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Charon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Gato, Heron, Goed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, González Aurelio, González Neptali, González Sandro, Goriseta, Guico, Gulyas, Guya, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernández, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halosso, Javier, Jiménez, Ko Elisa, Ko Wilton, Congun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lasatin, Liachon, Legarda, Lim, Limkaychong, López, Loyola, Losatan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangungodato, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernández, Marinho, Marquez, Martínez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natibidad Naganyo, Naba, Nieto, Noel, Negrales Jerico, Negrales Juan, Nolasco, Núñez Malaniaon, Ominal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ordanes, Ortega, Uano Dison, Pakya Alberto, Pakya Rogelio, Padiernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramiresato, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodríguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yeda, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sa Garbaria, Sa Caluran, Salceda, Sa Limbangon, Salo, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento, Sa Ulog, Sa Biliano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihan, Singsuat, Son Sing Estrelita, Son Sing Horacio, Suárez Aleta, Suárez David, Suntay, Si Alvarado, Tan Duran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Aliza, Tan Angelina, Tan Samir, Tan Shari, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves Arnolfo, Teves Jose, Tiyango, Tolentino, Torres Gómez, Tulpo, Tupas, Tutort, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali María Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Bergara, Villia, Villia Fuerte, Villia Nueva Eduardo, Villia Nueva Noel, Villar, Villaraza Suarez, Villarica, Violago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Wykurat, Zarate Zubiri.
Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill number nine five seven five. Abante, Abaya, Abelenosa, Abegsaldivar, Abunda, Acosta Alba, Agabas, Agarau, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Aragonés, Arenas, Umentado, Bagatining, Banyas Negrales, Baronda, Barsaga, Bautista Bandigan, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bravo, Bulut, Kabatbat, Cardema, Kari, Chungalawko, Angelika Ko, Elizaldi, Kawanko, Daza, De Jesus, Defensor Michael, Dimaporo Abdullah, Duabit, Erise, Ermitabuhain, Paringes Rudy Cesar, Fernández, Fernando, Fortún, García José Enrique, Garin Charon, Gasataya, Goed, Gonzaga, González Neptali, González Sandro, Guya, Hataman, Hernández, Herrera Di, Jiménez, Congun, Lagman, Liachon, Mangungodato, Marcoleta, Marinho, Marquez, Matba, Mendoza, Mercado, Negrales Juan, Nolasco, Núñez Malaniaon, Pakya Rogelio, Paduano, Pichay, Pineda, Rivera, Roman, Romero, Sa Caluran, Salceda, Sanchez, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singsuat, Suárez Aleta, Suárez David, Suntay, Si Alvarado, Tan Angelina, Tan Samir, Tan Sherni, Teves Arnolfo, Tiyango, Torres Gómez, Ti Alan, Unavia, Ui Juliet, Vargas Alfonso, Villia Nueva Eduardo, Villia Nueva Noel, Villaraza Suarez, Villarica, Yu, Enzubiri. With one nine three the affirmative, zero negative, six abstention, House Bill number nine five seven five is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration and third reading of House Bill number nine five seven six and for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill number nine five seven six, an act promoting the development of the bamboo industry by strengthening the Philippine Bamboo Industry Development Council, creating the Bamboo Industry Research and Development Center and providing incentive for bamboo plantation development and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill number nine five seven six. Abante, Abaya, Abelenosa, Abu, Abegsaldivar, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Ad Jong, Ad Bincula, Agabas, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Senaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Amatong, Angara, Aragonés, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Umentado, Babasa, Bagatining, Balindong, Banyas Negrales, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barsaga, Bascog, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Kalixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castillo, Castro Franz, Castro Predenil, Kayetano Alan Peter, Kayetano Mariela Arni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chungalawko, Angelika Ko, Elizaldi, Kawanko, Culiantes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Cueva, Culiamat, Tagooc, Dalipe, Dalog, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delos Santos, Deloso Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Khalid, Duabit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian, Evcas, Ecleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermitabuhain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Paringes Ria, Paringes Rudy Cesar, Fernández, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Flores, Fortún, Fortuno, Frasco, Puentebelia, Gaite, Garbin, García José Enrique, García Pablo John, García Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Charon, Gatasaya, Gachalian, Gato, Geron, Goed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, González Aurelio, González Neptali, González Sandro, Goriseta, Guico, Gulyas, Guya, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernández, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halosso, Javier, Jiménez, Ko Elisa, Ko Wilton, Congun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lasatin, Liachon, Legarda, Lim, Limkaychong, López, Loyola, Losatan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangungodato, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernández, Marinho, Marquez, Martínez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natibidad Naganyo, Naba, Nieto, Noel, Negrales Jerico, Negrales Juan, Nolasco, Núñez Malaniaon, Ominal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ordanes, Ortega, Uano Dison, Pakya Alberto, Pakya Rogelio, Padiernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramiresato, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodríguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yeda, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sa Garbaria, Sa Caluran, Salceda, Sa Limbangon, Salo, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento, Sa Ulog, Sa Biliano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihan, Singsuat, Son Sing Estrelita, Son Sing Horacio, Suárez Aleta, Suárez David, Suntay, Si Alvarado, Tan Duran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Aliza, Tan Angelina, Tan Samir, Tan Shari, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves Arnolfo, Teves Jose, Chango, Tolentino, Torres Gómez, Tulpo, Tupas, Tutort, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali María Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Bergara, Villia, Villia Fuerte, Villia Nueva Eduardo, Villia Nueva Noel, Villar, Villaraza Suarez, Villarica, Violago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Wykurat, Zarate Zubiri.
Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill number nine five seven six. Abante, Abaya, Abelenosa, Abegsaldivar, Abunda, Acosta Alba, Agabas, Agarau, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Arenas, Umentado, Bagatining, Banyas Negrales, Baronda, Barsa, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bravo, Bulut, Kabatbat, Cardema, Kari, Chungalawko, Angelika Ko, Elizaldi, Kawanko, Daza, De Jesus, Defensor Michael, Dimaporo Abdullah, Duabit, Erise, Ermitabuhain, Paringes Rudy Cesar, Fernández, Fernando, Fortún, García José Enrique, Garin Charon, Gatasaya, Goed, Gonzaga, González Neptali, González Sandro, Guya, Hataman, Hernández, Herrera Di, Jiménez, Congun, Liachon, Mangungodato, Marcoleta, Marinho, Marquez, Matba, Mendoza, Mercado, Negrales Juan, Nolasco, Núñez Malaniaon, Paduano, Pichay, Pineda, Rivera, Roman, Romero, Sa Caluran, Salceda, Sanchez, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singsuat, Suárez Aleta, Suárez David, Suntay, Si Alvarado, Tan Angelina, Tan Samir, Tan Sherni, Teves Arnolfo, Chango, Torres Gómez, Ti Alan, Unavia, Ui Juliet, Villia Nueva Eduardo, Villia Nueva Noel, Villaraza Suarez, Villarica, Yu Zubiri. With one nine nine members voting in the affirmative, six in the negative and zero abstentions, House Bill number nine five seven six is approved on the final third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we recognize the Honorable Representative Cafemia Culiamat of Bayan Munapartilis to explain her vote.
The Honorable Culiamat of Bayan Munapartilis is recognized.
The Honorable Culiamat.
Madam Speaker, Magandang hapon, magandang hapon sa akong mga kapwa kinatawan. Ah, ngaw ang buto ng representasyon ito, sa House Bill number nine five ah seven six. Ah, habang kinikilala natin ang pang-ekonomiyang halaga ng bamboo, ukawayan total ang representasyon ito sa pagpapalagaanak ng mga plantasyon na isusulong ng panuka ng batas sa pagbibigay ng napakaraming intensibo sa pagtatayo ng mga bamboo plantation. Sa ilalim ng section nine, exempted ang mga plantasyon mula sa pagbayad ng renta sa lupa sa loob ng limang taon. Exempted din sa iba't ibang buwis at bayarin. May prioridad din ang mga developer ng plantasyon para sa kautang mula sa gobyerno. Hindi din para sa lokal na apakinabang at pagproseso ang mga itatanin. Sapagkat wala din itong restriksyon sa dami ng maaring iexport ng na bamboo sa ibang bansa. Sa Mindanao pa lamang, Madam Chair, napakarami ng mga magsasaka at katutubo na naitituhan sa mga pagtatayo ng malawakang plantasyon ng task traps sa pakinabang ng mga dayuhan korporasyon. Mahalagang matuon ang sustinabring paglinang sa mga agricultural nalupain para pagkamit ng siguridad sa pagtayo ng mamayang Pilipino. Dahil dito, ngaw ang buto ng representasyon ito sa House Bill number five nine five seven six. Raming salamat, Madam Speaker, at magandang hapon.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of House Bill number nine six zero eight and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting, I so move, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill number nine six zero eight, an establishing the no call, no text and no email registration system and providing penalties for violations thereof. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill number nine six zero eight on third reading. Abante, Abaya, Abelenosa, Abu, Abegsaldivar, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Ad Jong, Ad Bincula, Agabas, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Senaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Amatong, Angara, Aragonés, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Umentado, Babasa, Bagatining, Balindong, Banyas Negrales, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barsaga, Bascog, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Kalixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castillo, Castro Franz, Castro Predenil, Kayetano Alan Peter, Kayetano Mariela Arni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chungalawko, Angelika Ko, Elizaldi, Kawanko, Culiantes, Kuhuanku, Coliantes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kurisma, Cueva, Kulyamat, Tagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, De Los Santos, De Lozo Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Kalid, Duabit, Duhalii, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian, Evcas, Ecleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermitabuhain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrelia, Farinyas Ria, Farinyas Rudy Cesar, Fernandez, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Puentebelia, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gata Sayah, Gatchalian, Gato, Heron, Goed, Gomart, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Giko, Gulyas, Guya, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Haloshos, Javier, Jimenezco, Elisa, Co Wilton, Kongun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lasatin, Liachon, Legarda, Lim Lim Kay Chong, Lopez, Loyola, Losotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangungodato, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natibidad Naganyo, Naba, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Juan, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyon, Ominal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ordanes, Ortega, Ouanodison, Pakya Alberto, Pakya Rogelio, Padernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramiresato, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Roman Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yeda, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sa Garbaria, Sa Kaluran, Salceda, Sa Limbangon, Salo, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Rektos, Sarmiento, Sa Ulog, Savillano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihan, Sing Suat, Sing Estrelita, Sing Horacio, Suarez Aleta, Suarez David, Sun Tay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Aliza, Tan Angelina, Tan Shamir, Tan Sharie, Tan Shurnee, Tehada, Tevez Arnulfo, Tevez Jose, Chango, Tolentino, Torres Gomez, Tulpo, Tupas, Tutort, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Ummali Alfonso, Ummali Maria Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Valeriano, Bal Mayor, Vargas, Vargas, Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Bergara, Bilia, Billa Fuerte, Billa Nueva, Eduardo, Billa Nueva, Noel, Biliar, Bilarasa Suarez, Biliarica, Biolago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waykurat, Zarate Zubiri.
Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9608. Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abueg, Saldivar, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advinkula, Agabas, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Henaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amantimatba, Amatong, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Umentado, Babasa, Bagaching, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barsaga, Baskug, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabat Bat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kawagdan, Cardema, Cardema, Carri, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Cayetano Alan Peter, Cayetano Mariela Arni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chungalauko, Angelica, Coelisaldi, Kuhuanku, Coliantes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kurisma, Cueva, Kulyamat, Tagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, With two hundred and nine members voting in affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill Number 9608 is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9651. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and hereby call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 9651. An Act Strengthening the Regulatory Framework on Data Privacy Protection, Aligning with International Standards, Challenges, and Other Cross-Border Data Processing Concerns, Amending for the Purpose Republic Act Number 10173, Otherwise Known as the Data Privacy Act of 2012. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill Number 9651 on third reading. Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abueg, Saldivar, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advinkula, Agabas, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Henaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amantimatba, Amatong, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Umentado, Babasa, Bagaching, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barsaga, Baskug, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabat Bat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kawagdan, Cardema, Carri, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Cayetano Alan Peter, Cayetano Mariela Arni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chungalauko, Angelica, Coelisaldi, Kuhuanku, Coliantes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kurisma, Cueva, Kulyamat, Tagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, De Los Santos, De Lozo Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Kalid, Duabit, Duhalii, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian, Evcas, Ecleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermitabuhain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrelia, Farinyas Ria, Farinyas Rudy Cesar, Fernandez, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Puentebelia, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gata Sayah, Gatchalian, Gato, Geron, Goed, Gomart, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Giko, Gulyas, Guya, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Haloshos, Javier, Jimenez, Co Elisa, Co Wilton, Kongun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lasatin, Liachon, Legarda, Lim Lim Kay Chong, Lopez, Loyola, Losotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangungodato, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natibidad Naganyo, Naba, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Juan, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyon, Ominal, Ominal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ordanes, Ortega, Ouanodison, Pakya Alberto, Pakya Rogelio, Padernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramiresato, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Roman Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yeda, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sa Garbaria, Sa Kaluran, Salceda, Sa Limbangon, Salo, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Rektos, Sarmiento, Sa Ulog, Savillano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihan, Sing Suat, Sing Estrelita, Sing Horacio, Suarez Aleta, Suarez David, Sun Tay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Aliza, Tan Angelina, Tan Shamir, Tan Sharie, Tan Shurnee, Tehada, Tevez Arnulfo, Tevez Jose, Chango, Tolentino, Torres Gomez, Tulpo, Tupas, Tutort, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Ummali Alfonso, Ummali Maria Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Valeriano, Bal Mayor, Vargas, Vargas, Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Bergara, Bilia, Billa Fuerte, Billa Nueva, Eduardo, Billa Nueva, Noel, Biliar, Bilarasa, Suarez, Biliarica, Biolago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waykurat, Zarate Zubiri.
Second, second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9731. Abanta, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abueg, Saldivar, Abunda, Agabas, Agarau, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Arenas, Umentado, Bagaching, Banyas Nograles, Baronda, Barsaga, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bravo, Bulut, Kabat Bat, Cardema, Carri, Chungalauko, Angelica, Coelisaldi, Kuhuanku, Daza, Defensor Michael, Dimaporo Abdullah, Duabit, Erise, Ermitabuhain, Farinyas Rudy Cesar, Fernandez, Fernando, Fortun, Garin Sharon, Garin Sharon, Gata Sayah, Goed, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Sandro, Guya, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Jimenez, Kongun, Liachon, Mangungodato, Marcoleta, Marino, Marquez, Matba, Mendoza, Mercado, Nogralis Juan, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyon, Paduano, Pichay, Pineda, Rivera, Romero, Sa Kaluran, Salceda, Sanchez, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Sing Suat, Suarez Aleta, Suarez David, Sun Tay, Si Alvarado, Tan Shamir, Tan Shurnee, Tevez Arnulfo, Chango, Torres Gomez, Ti Alan, Unavia, Ui Juliet, Billa Nueva, Eduardo, Billa Nueva, Noel, Bilarasa, Suarez, Biliarica, Yu Zubiri. With two hundred and nine members voting in affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill Number 9651 is approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9731. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 9731, an act establishing the Philippine High School for Creative Arts System and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill Number 9731 on third reading. Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abueg, Saldivar, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advinkula, Agabas, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Henaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amantimatba, Amatong, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Umentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barsaga, Baskug, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabat Bat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kawagdan, Cardema, Carri, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Cayetano Alan Peter, Cayetano Mariela Arni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chungalauko, Angelica, Coelisaldi, Kuhuanku, Coliantes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kurisma, Cueva, Kulyamat, Tagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, De Los Santos, De Lozo Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Kalid, Duabit, Duhalii, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian, Evcas, Ecleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermitabuhain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrelia, Farinyas Ria, Farinyas Rudy Cesar, Fernandez, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Puentebelia, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gata Sayah, Gatchalian, Gato, Heron, Goed, Gomart, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Giko, Gulya, Gulyas, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Haloshos, Javier, Jimenez, Co Elisa, Co Wilton, Kongun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lasatin, Liachon, Legarda, Lim Lim Kay Chong, Lopez, Loyola, Losotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangungodato, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natibidad Naganyo, Naba, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Juan, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyon, Ominal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ordanes, Ortega, Ouanodison, Pakya Alberto, Pakya Rogelio, Padernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramiresato, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Roman Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yeda, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sa Garbaria, Sa Kaluran, Salceda, Sa Limbangon, Salo, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Rektos, Sarmiento, Sa Ulog, Savillano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihan, Sing Suat, Sing Estrelita, Sing Horacio, Suarez Aleta, Suarez David, Sun Tay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Aliza, Tan Angelina, Tan Shamir, Tan Sharie, Tan Shurnee, Tehada, Tevez Arnulfo, Tevez Jose, Chango, Tolentino, Torres Gomez, Tulpo, Tupas, Tutort, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Ummali Alfonso, Ummali Maria Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Valeriano, Bal Mayor, Vargas, Vargas, Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Bergara, Bilia, Billa Fuerte, Billa Nueva, Eduardo, Billa Nueva, Noel, Biliar, Bilarasa Suarez, Biliarica, Biolago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waykurat, Zarate Zubiri.
Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9731. Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abueg, Saldivar, Abunda, Agabas, Agarau, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Arenas, Umentado, Bagatsing, Banyas Nograles, Baronda, Barsaga, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bravo, Bulut, Kabat Bat, Cardema, Carri, Chungalauko, Angelica, Coelisaldi, Kuhuanku, Daza, Defensor Michael, Dimaporo Abdullah, Duabit, Erise, Ermitabuhain, Farinyas Rudy Cesar, Fernandez, Fernando, Fortun, Garin Sharon, Gata Sayah, Goed, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Sandro, Guya, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Jimenez, Kongun, Liachon, Mangungodato, Marcoleta, Marino, Marquez, Matba, Mendoza, Mercado, Nogralis Juan, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyon, Paduano, Pichay, Pineda, Rivera, Romero, Sa Kaluran, Salceda, Sanchez, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Sing Suat, Suarez Aleta, Suarez David, Sun Tay, Si Alvarado, Tan Shamir, Tan Shurnee, Tevez Arnulfo, Chango, Torres Gomez, Ti Alan, Unavia, Ui Juliet, Billa Nueva, Eduardo, Billa Nueva, Noel, Bilarasa, Suarez, Biliarica, Yu, Zubiri. With two hundred and eleven members voting in affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill Number 9731 is approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9778. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and to call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 9778, an act allowing voting by proxy in primary cooperatives, thereby amending for the purpose Chapter Four, Article Thirty-Six of Republic Act Number 9520, otherwise known as the Philippine Cooperative Code of 2008. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill Number 9778 on third reading. Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abueg, Saldivar, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advinkula, Agabas, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Henaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amantimatba, Amatong, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Umentado, Babasa, Bagaching, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barsaga, Baskug, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabat Bat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kawagdan, Cardema, Carri, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Cayetano Alan Peter, Cayetano Mariela Arni. Kayatanu Alan Peter, Kayatanu Maria La Arnie, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chunggalaw, Ko Angelika, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Wangko, Kulyantes, Crisologo, Kuak, Quaresma, Cueva, Kulyamat, Tagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delos Santos, Delos Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Khalid, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian, Ebkas, Ekleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erisie, Erigel, Ermita Buain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Parinyas Ria, Parinyas Rudy Cesar, Fernandez Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuente Belia, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Charon, Gata Sayag, Gachalian, Gato, Heron, Goed, Gomart, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Gwiko, Gulyas, Guya, Jarezco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halosos, Javier, Jimenez, Ko Elisa, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lazatin, Lia Chon, Legarda, Lim, Limkaychong, López, Loyola, Losotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangundadatu, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martínez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natibidad Naganyon, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nagrales Jerico, Nagrales Juan, Olasco, Núñez Malaniaon, O Minal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ordanes, Ortega, Uano Dison, Pakya Alberto, Pakya Rogelio, Padiernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramirasato, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yeda, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sakarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Sanchez, Angkopan, Santos Rektos, Sarmiento, Saulug, Sabelliano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihan, Singsuwat, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suárez Aletas, Suárez David, Suntay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Aliza, Tan Angelina, Tan Shamir, Tan Sherni, Tehada, Tevez Arnulfo, Tevez Josette, Tiyango, Tolentino, Torres Gómez, Tulfo, Tupas, Tutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali Maria Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Bergara, Villia, Villapuerte, Bilyanueva Eduardo, Bilyanueva Noel, Bilyar, Bilyarasa Suarez, Bilyarica, Violago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waykurat, Zarate Zubiri.
Ah, second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill number nine seven seven eight. Abanta, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abwigsaldivar, Abunda, Agaraw, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong Arenas, Umentado, Bagatsing, Baronda, Barsaga, Biazon, Bilyones, Biron, Bravo, Bulut, Kabatbat, Cardema, Kari, Chunggalaw, Ko Angelika, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Wangko, Daza, Defensor Michael, Dimaporo Abdullah, Duavit, Erisie, Ermita Buain, Parinyas Rudy Cesar, Fernandez Fernando, Fortun, Garin Charon, Gata Sayag, Goed Gonzaga, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Jimenez, Konghun, Lia Chon, Mangundadatu, Marcoleta, Marino, Marquez, Matba, Mendoza, Mercado, Nagrales Juan, Olasco, Núñez Malaniaon, Paduano, Pichay, Pineda, Rivera, Romero, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sanchez, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singsuwat, Suárez Aletas, Suárez David, Si Alvarado, Tan Shamir, Tan Sherni, Tevez Arnulfo, Tiyango, Torres Gómez, Ti Alan, Unavia, Ui Juliet, Bilyanueva Eduardo, Bilyanueva Noel, Bilyarasa Suarez, Bilyarica, Yu Zubiri.
With two hundred thirteen members voting in affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill number nine seven seven eight is approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill number nine seven eight five. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill number nine seven eight five, an act strengthening the Commission on Elections by increasing the manpower complement in its field offices, providing office spaces separate and independent from local government units, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Batas Pambansa Bilang Eighty-Eight One, as amended, otherwise known as the Omnibus Election Code of the Philippines. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill number nine seven eight five on third reading. Abanta, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abwigsaldivar, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advinkula, Agabas, Agaraw, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Albario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Henaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amantematba, Amatong, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Umentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nagrales, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barsaga, Bascog, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Kabredo, Kagas, Calderon, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Kayatanu Alan Peter, Kayatanu Maria La Arnie, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chunggalaw, Ko Angelika, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Wangko, Kulyantes, Crisologo, Kuak, Quaresma, Cueva, Kulyamat, Tagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delos Santos, Delos Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Khalid, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian, Ebkas, Ekleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erisie, Erigel, Ermita Buain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Parinyas Ria, Parinyas Rudy Cesar, Fernandez Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuente Belia, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Charon, Gata Sayag, Gachalian, Gato, Heron, Goed, Gomart, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Gwiko, Gulyas, Guya, Jarezco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halosos, Javier, Jimenez, Ko Elisa, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lazatin, Lia Chon, Legarda, Lim, Limkaychong, López, Loyola, Losotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangundadatu, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martínez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natibidad Naganyon, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nagrales Jerico, Nagrales Juan, Olasco, Núñez Malaniaon, O Minal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ordanes, Ortega, Uano Dison, Pakya Alberto, Pakya Rogelio, Padiernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramirasato, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yeda, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sakarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Sanchez, Angkopan, Santos Rektos, Sarmiento, Saulug, Sabelliano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihan, Singsuwat, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suárez Aletas, Suárez David, Suntay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Aliza, Tan Angelina, Tan Shamir, Tan Sherni, Tehada, Tevez Arnulfo, Tevez Josette, Tiyango, Tolentino, Torres Gómez, Tulfo, Tupas, Tutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali Maria Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Bergara, Villia, Villapuerte, Bilyanueva Eduardo, Bilyanueva Noel, Bilyar, Bilyarasa Suarez, Bilyarica, Violago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waykurat, Zarate Zubiri.
Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill number nine seven eight five. Abanta, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abwigsaldivar, Abunda, Agaraw, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong Arenas, Umentado, Bagatsing, Baronda, Barsaga, Biazon, Bilyones, Biron, Bravo, Bulut, Kabatbat, Cardema, Kari, Chunggalaw, Ko Angelika, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Wangko, Daza, Defensor Michael, Dimaporo Abdullah, Duavit, Erisie, Ermita Buain, Parinyas Rudy Cesar, Fernandez Fernando, Fortun, Garin Charon, Gata Sayag, Goed Gonzaga, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Jimenez, Konghun, Lia Chon, Mangundadatu, Marcoleta, Marino, Marquez, Matba, Mendoza, Mercado, Nagrales Juan, Olasco, Núñez Malaniaon, Paduano, Pichay, Pineda, Rivera, Romero, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sanchez, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singsuwat, Suárez Aletas, Suárez David, Si Alvarado, Tan Shamir, Tan Sherni, Tevez Arnulfo, Tiyango, Torres Gómez, Ti Alan, Unavia, Ui Juliet, Bilyanueva Eduardo, Bilyanueva Noel, Bilyarasa Suarez, Bilyarica, Yu, En Zubiri. With two hundred fifteen members voting in affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill number nine seven eight five is approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill number nine eight zero six. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill number nine eight oh six, an act mandating public and private educational institutions and all business establishments, including facilities, handling, storing, and transporting hazardous materials to participate in the conduct of a quarterly nationwide simultaneous earthquake and emergency preparedness drill, and providing penalties for violations thereof. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill nine eight oh six on third reading. Abanta, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abwigsaldivar, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advinkula, Agabas, Agaraw, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Albario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Henaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amantematba, Amatong, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Umentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nagrales, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barsaga, Bascog, Bascog, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Kabredo, Kagas, Calderon, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Kayatanu Alan Peter, Kayatanu Maria La Arnie, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chunggalaw, Ko Angelika, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Wangko, Kulyantes, Crisologo, Kuak, Quaresma, Cueva, Kulyamat, Tagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delos Santos, Delos Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Khalid, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian, Ebkas, Ekleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erisie, Erigel, Ermita Buain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Parinyas Ria, Parinyas Rudy Cesar, Fernandez Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuente Belia, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Charon, Gata Sayag, Gachalian, Gato, Geron, Goed, Gomart, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Gwiko, Gulyas, Guya, Jarezco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halosos, Javier, Jimenez, Ko Elisa, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lazatin, Lia Chon, Legarda, Lim, Limkaychong, Loyola, López Loyola, Losotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangundadatu, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martínez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natibidad Naganyon, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nagrales Jerico, Nagrales Juan, Olasco, Núñez Malaniaon, O Minal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ordanes, Ortega, Uano Dison, Pakya Alberto, Pakya Rogelio, Padiernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramirasato, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yeda, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sakarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Sanchez, Angkopan, Santos Rektos, Sarmiento, Saulug, Sabelliano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihan, Singsuwat, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suárez Aletas, Suárez David, Suntay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Aliza, Tan Angelina, Tan Shamir, Tan Sherni, Tehada, Tevez Arnulfo, Tevez Josette, Tiyango, Tolentino, Torres Gómez, Tulfo, Tupas, Tutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali Maria Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Bergara, Villia, Villapuerte, Bilyanueva Eduardo, Bilyanueva Noel, Bilyar, Bilyarasa Suarez, Bilyarica, Violago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waykurat, Zarate Zubiri.
Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill number nine eight oh six. Abanta, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abwigsaldivar, Abunda, Agaraw, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong Arenas, Umentado, Bagatsing, Baronda, Barsaga, Biazon, Bilyones, Biron, Bulut, Kabatbat, Cardema, Kari, Chunggalaw, Ko Angelika, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Wangko, Daza, Defensor Michael, Dimaporo Abdullah, Duavit, Erisie, Erisie, Ermita Buain, Parinyas Rudy Cesar, Fernandez Fernando, Fortun, Garin Charon, Gata Sayag, Goed Gonzaga, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Jimenez, Konghun, Lia Chon, Mangundadatu, Marcoleta, Marino, Marquez, Matba, Mendoza, Mercado, Nagrales Juan, Olasco, Núñez Malaniaon, Paduano, Pichay, Pineda, Rivera, Romero, Sakaluran, Salceda, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singsuwat, Suárez Aletas, Suárez David, Si Alvarado, Tan Shamir, Tan Sherni, Tevez Arnulfo, Tiyango, Torres Gómez, Ti Alan, Unavia, Ui Juliet, Bilyanueva Eduardo, Bilyanueva Noel, Bilyarasa Suarez, Bilyarica, Zubiri.
With two hundred seventeen members voting in affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill number nine eight oh six is approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, finally, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill number nine eight three three. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill number nine eight three three, an act providing stronger measures for the conservation and protection of wildlife resources and their habitats, repealing for this purpose Republic Act Number Nine One Four Seven for the Wildlife Resources Conservation and Protection Act, and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill number nine eight three three on third reading. Abanta, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abwigsaldivar, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advinkula, Agabas, Agaraw, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Albario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Henaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amantematba, Amatong, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Umentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nagrales, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barsaga, Bascog, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Kabredo, Kagas, Calderon, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Kayatanu Alan Peter, Kayatanu Maria La Arnie, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chunggalaw, Ko Angelika, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Wangko, Kulyantes, Crisologo, Kuak, Quaresma, Cueva, Kulyamat, Tagook, Dalipe, Cueva, Kulyamat, Tagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Daza, De Jesus de Venecia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, De Los Santos, De Los Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Khalid, Duavit, Duali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian, Evcas, Ecleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermitabuhain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrelia, Farinyas Ria, Farinyas Rudy Cesar, Fernandez, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fente Belia, Gaite, Garbin, García Enrique, García Pablo Djan, García Vincent, Garinjanet, Garincharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Gato, Heron, Goet, Gomark, Gonzaga, Gonzales Aurelio, Gonzales Nepli, Gonzalesandro, Goriseta, Giko, Gulya, Guya, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera D., Hofer, Haloso, Javier, Jimenez, Ko Elisa, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Legarda, Lim Lim, Kay Chong, López Loyola, Gusutan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maseda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangudadatu, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martínez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natimidad Naganyo, Nabanyeto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Juan, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Ominal, Olivares, Om Jose, Om Roni, Ordanes, Ortega, Oano Dison, Pakya Alberto, Pakya Rogelio, Padiernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramiresato, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Roman Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Sagueda, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaryas, Sa Caluran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Sanchez, Sangkupan, Santos Rektos, Sarmiento, Sa Ulug, Savelliano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mehan, Sin Suwat, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suárez Aleta, Suárez David, Sun Taisi, Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Aliza, Tan Angelina, Tan Samir, Tan Sharri, Tan Shurni, Tehada, Tevez Arnulfo, Tevez Jose, Tiangko, Talentino, Torres Gómez, Tulfo, Tupas, Tutort, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Ummali Alfonso, Ummali Maria Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Uj Juliet, Uj Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Villa, Villa Fuerte, Bilyanueva Eduardo, Bilyanueva Noel, Bilyar, Bilyarasa Suárez, Bilyarica, Violago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waikarat, Zarate, Zubiri.
Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9833. Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abwegsaldivar, Abunda, Agarau, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Arenas, Omentado, Bagaching, Baronda, Bersaga, Biazon, Bilyones, Biron, Bravo, Bulut, Kabatbat, Cardema, Kari, Chunggalaw, Ko Angelika, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Huangko, Daza, Defensor Michael, Dimaporo Abdullah, Duavit, Erise, Ermitabuhain, Farinyas Rudy Cesar, Fernandez, Fernando, Fortun, Garincharon, Gasataya, Goet, Gonzalesandro, Guya, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera D., Jimenez, Konghun, Lia Chon, Mangudadatu, Marcoleta, Marino, Marquez, Matba, Mendoza, Mercado, Nograles Juan, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Paduano, Pichay, Pineda, Rivera, Romero, Sa Caluran, Salceda, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Sin Suwat, Suárez Aleta, Suárez David, Si Alvarado, Tan Samir, Tan Shurni, Tevez Arnulfo, Tiangko, Torres Gómez, Ti Alan, Unavia, Bilyanueva Eduardo, Bilyanueva Noel, Bilyarasa Suárez, Bilyarica, Enzubiri. With two hundred eleven members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and six abstentions, House Bill Number 9833 is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Thank you very much. Madam Speaker, under the calendar of business for today, under second reading, I move that we consider House Bill Number 9990 as contained in Committee Report 1134, copies of which has been previously distributed to the members. May I request therefore that the Secretary General be instructed to read the title of the measure.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill.
Page one. Nine 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 zero. Nine 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 zero, diba?
House Bill Number 9990. An act exempting incentives, rewards, bonuses, and other forms of emoluments received by national athletes and coaches from taxes amending for the purpose Republic Act Number 10699, otherwise known as the National Athletes and Coaches Benefits and Incentives Act. Majority Leader.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, may I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate and recognize Congresswoman Sharon Garin for her sponsorship.
The Honorable Sharon Garin is recognized. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we recognize Congressman Joey Salsette, the first for his sponsorship of the said measure?
The Honorable Joey Salsette is recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, dear colleagues. Today, a country honors its beliefs when it puts its money where its mouth is. For decades, we have professed belief in the power of sports and nation building. We have taken pride in the accomplishments of Filipino athletes, even the athletes who are Filipinos by blood, not by nationality. Only under this government will we truly invest enough to give our Olympic athletes a fighting chance. I am proud to say that under the leadership of the President, the Philippine Olympic Committee got the highest ever Olympic year budget at 945 million in 2021 under the leadership of our Speaker. Congress had allotted 1.3 billion to the Philippine Olympic Committee, the highest ever share of the national budget that the committee ever received, at point zero per three percent. Clearly, investment corresponds with accomplishments. Our 2020 Olympic performance is our best finish ever. We have broken many records for our country, including our first non-exhibition gold medal and our first multiple medal finish in eight decades. The historic accomplishment of Hidalyn Diaz, a Staff Sergeant of the Philippine Air Force, in breaking the record for her own event and getting us a gold medal is the feat for which we named the measure I am sponsoring today. But we also recognize the historic events of our other medalists this year, Nesti Petesho, Yumir Marshall, and Carlos Paalam. Our Olympics contingent has also come close to achieving medals in other events, and with more investment, I am certain, we will also reach podium finishes next time. In response to the victories of our athletes that our athletes have achieved, several donors have pledged bonuses and incentives. The tax code is not clear about how we should treat this gift. The Bureau of Internal Revenue issued a statement saying that the athletes will not have declared this as part of their taxable income. The exemption in place is supposedly Section 32B-7-D. But that paragraph specifically indicates that it extends from taxable income prices and awards. One alternative interpretation of that term is that prices and awards are those given by the organizers. The gifts given to our athletes are gratuities and could be interpreted as bonuses or windfalls rather than prices and awards. We hope to close this room for interpretation by clarifying that all rewards, bonuses, and other emoluments for national athletes and coaches shall be exempt from any and all taxes. The bill also makes the tax exemption executory, even if BIR does not issue rules and regulations. It also specifically indicates that it does not repeal other tax privileges of national athletes and coaches. Going back to my point on investing in our athletes, the bonuses our athletes receive are after the fact of their win. It certainly honors their achievement, but it did not accrue to their needs when they were still trying to earn their medals. This bill, Mr. Speaker, encourages donors to support our athletes by making their gifts tax exempt one year before the competition and three months after. This would help promote supporting the training and conditioning needs of our athletes when they are still working towards podium finishes. That, Mr. Speaker, is when support for our athletes matters. At this juncture, allow this representation to congratulate the members of this chamber who are also active in leadership roles in various sporting associations. Their leadership is also part of the reason why we finished well this year. Given the importance of this measure to national pride and unity and having received unanimous support for this measure during the committee deliberation, I move for the urgent and immediate approval of this measure. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Majority Leader. May we recognize Congresswoman Sharon Garin for her sponsorship speech.
Esteemed Representative of the party list Ambis Owa, our Chairperson of Economic Affairs, the Honorable Sharon Garin is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Mr. Speaker. Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker.
Please proceed, madam, you have the floor.
The Philippines' first Olympic gold was not earned in fifteen seconds. The time it took weightlifter Hidalyn Diaz to perfect her attempt of 127 kilogram clean and jerk lift. The next multiple Olympic win of the Philippines after eighty-nine long years was not achieved in four matches or the number of matches triumphed by boxers Nashi Petesho in the women's featherweight boxing division. Nor can an Olympic medal be scored in ten minutes. The approximate period, boxers Carlo Paalam and Yumir Marshall stood in the ring for their men's flyweight and middleweight division bouts. While a competition may last only a couple of minutes, the road to becoming an Olympic medalist is, in contrast, comprised of early mornings and long days spent in training as well as countless years of conditioning and practice. Unlike the extravagant yet well-deserved praise and recognition given to our athletes for their victories, their success ironically starts with humble beginnings filled with determination and discipline, solitude, sacrifices, and time spent away from loved ones in numerous defeats, injuries, and failures. As a means of acknowledging the tremendous effort displayed by our Tokyo 2020 Olympic medalists and qualifiers and all of the athletes and para-athletes gaining honor and glory for the country as well as their respected coaches who worked as hard alongside them, we, in the Committee of Ways and Means headed by Congressman Joey Salceda, are honored to present today House Bill Number 9990 to be known as the Hidalyn Diaz Act. We believe that support to training is paramount to any incentive that may be received by athletes after winning a medal. It is in that path leading to their goals where they most need financial assistance. To ensure that they are well-supported in the time of their careers, this measure exempts from taxes any donations and contributions given to national athletes, including our athletes with disabilities, to fund their training and competition-related expenses. As an incentive for persons and entities to continuously extend support to our athletes, this bill allows all donations and incentives received by national athletes and their respective coaches as deductions from their gross income. This bill likewise exempts from taxes all incentives, rewards, bonuses, and other forms of emoluments received by national athletes and their coaches who compete or win in international sports competitions. And to ensure the tax exemption of incentives already given and will be given by reason of the Tokyo 2020 Summer Olympics, this measure is set to be retroactive to January 1 of this year. We seek the support of the members of this August body in approving this measure to contribute in the production of more Filipino Olympians and world-class Filipino athletes. Thank you and good afternoon, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Thank you very much. Mr. Speaker, may I move that we recognize the gentle lady from Marikina, Representative Stella Kimbo, for her manifestation?
Our esteemed Deputy Minority Leader, the Honorable Stella Kimbo is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the minority, I wish to manifest our intention to be included as co-authors of the bill.
Your manifestation is well noted. Majority Leader.
Thank you very much. Mr. Speaker, there being no other members who wishes to interpolate, may I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate?
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Period of sponsorship and debate is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may I move that we open the period of amendments?
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the period of amendments is open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker. There being no committee amendments, may I move that we terminate the period of committee amendments?
Hearing no objections, motion is carried. Period of committee amendments is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no individual amendments, may I move that we terminate the period of amendments?
With no objections, the motion is carried. Period of individual amendments is closed. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may I move that we approve House Bill 9990 on second reading?
All those in favor of this House bill, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, approved on second reading. Majority Floor Leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Under Administrative Matters, Mr. Speaker, I move for the change of referrals of the following measure.
Please proceed.
House Bills Numbers 9499, 3141, and 3929 from the Committee on National Defense and Security and Public Order and Safety to the Committee on Justice, National Defense and Security, and Public Order and Safety.
With no objections, the change of referral is carried. Please proceed, Majority Leader.
House Bills Numbers 4312, 5972, 9898, and 9902 from the Committee on Justice to the Committees on Justice, National Defense and Security, and Public Order and Safety.
Hearing no objections, the motion is carried. Change of referral of the Majority Leader is approved. Please proceed.
House Bill Number 1865 from the Committees on Ecology and Transportation to the Committee on Ecology.
With no objections, the motion is carried.
House Bill Number 3916 from the Committee on Revision of Laws to the Committee on Justice.
With no objections, the motion is carried. Please proceed, Majority Leader.
House Bill Number 4821 from the Committee on Poverty Alleviation to the Committee on Social Services.
With no objections, the motion is carried. Please proceed.
House Bill Number 8641 from the Committee on Public Order and Safety to the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
With no objections, the motion of the Majority Leader is carried. Set bills are referred to the appropriate committees. Please proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. In accordance with our rules governing inquiries in aid of legislation, I move that we refer the following House Resolutions to the appropriate committees. House Resolution 1943 to the Committee on Social Services.
Please proceed with your omnibus motion.
House Resolution 1944 to the Committee on National Defense and Security. House Resolution 1949 to the Committee on National Defense and Security. House Resolution 1950 to the Committee on National Defense and Security. House Resolution 1952 to the Committee on Basic Education and Culture. House Resolution 1953
House Resolution 1953, to the Committee on Higher and Technical Education. House Resolution 1959, to the Committee on Basic Education and Culture. House Resolution 1961, to the Committee on Ecology. House Resolution 1965, to the Committee on Agriculture and Food. House Resolution 1969, to the Committee on Women and Gender Equality and Welfare of Children. House Resolution 1972, to the Committee on Labor and Employment. House Resolution 1973, to the Committee on Labor and Employment. House Resolution 1974, to the Committee on Labor and Employment. House Resolution 1998, to the Committee on Agrarian Reform. House Resolution 2009, to the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs. House Resolution 2033, to the Committee on Public Order and Safety. House Resolution 2034, to the Committee on Dangerous Drugs. House Resolution 2035, to the Committee on Creative Industry and Performing Arts. House Resolution 2042, to the Committee on Youth and Sports Development. House Resolution 2054, to the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms. House Resolution 2064, to the Committee on Health. House Resolution 2153, to the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization, and Committee on Health.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried. Following House, those House Resolutions are referred to the aforementioned committees. Majority Floor Leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Pursuant to our rules governing inquiries in aid of legislation, I move that we refer the following speeches to the appropriate committee. Speech of Representative Manuel Zubiri on Keeping the Bayanian Spirit Alive in Both the Government and Private Sectors, to the Committee on Economic Affairs. The speech of Representative Franz Castro on State and Philippine Education, to the Committee on Basic Education and Culture. The speech of Representative Eupemia Kulyamat, Ang Tunay Na Estado ng Pambansang Minoria, to the Committee on Indigenous Cultural Communities and Indigenous People. The speech of Representative Eileen Brosas on State of the Women Address, to the Committee on Women and Gender Equality. The speech of Representative Gaite on State of the Workers, on the Committee on Labor and Employment. And the speech of Representative Tevez, Issues on Philippine Army Officials Assigned in Negroes Occidental, to the Committee on National Defense and Security.
With no objections, the motion of the Majority Leader is carried. Said privileged speeches are referred to those appropriate committees. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may I move for a few-minute suspension?
Session is suspended. Session is resumed, Majority Floor Leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that we include additional co-authors to House Bills Number 9841, 9850, 9851, 9852, 9884, 9925, and 9990. And House Resolutions Number 1978, 2068, 2093, 2122, 2116, and 2109, as contained in the list to be submitted by the Committee on Rules.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Majority Leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, may we direct the Secretary General to immediately transmit House Bills approved on, to the Senate, House Bills approved on third and final reading.
The Secretary General is directed to transmit to the Senate all House Bills approved on third reading today. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other items in the agenda, may I move that we suspend the session until August 25 at 2:00 p.m.
Session is suspended until August 25, Wednesday, 2:00 p.m. in the afternoon.
Recording stopped.